Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the police clerk please call the roll so that we might establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Shenier. Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
And remotely, Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. To the members who are participating remotely, I want to thank you for setting the example. As you know, the governor has asked, and now the county directive backs that up, that people age 65 or over stay essentially self-quarantined. And as a result, we have three members of the council that are very, very young in spirit, but do in fact meet that chronological distinction. And so they are participating remotely. And because the governor through executive order has created flexibility around how we meet, they are full participants in this meeting even if they are not here physically present with us. In addition, of course, just like last Friday, members of the public are not here present in the chamber. We do have some lead members of the city staff, sitting appropriately distant, by the way, from one another, which is important. The public can still participate, and there are two key ways you can participate here. I'm going to give two email addresses, and so please send your comments through the meeting, and the clerk will attempt to distribute them to us in real time so that we can benefit. It's clerk@cityofsacramento.org and publiccomment@cityofsacramento.org. Those are two separate email addresses. Clerk@cityofsacramento.org and publiccomment@cityofsacramento.org. And we will take your public testimony. We have several discussion and action items today, but I thought I would begin by giving you just an update on what occurred over the last hour with the county directive, because a lot of people have questions. And I've talked to several members of the media, but for those watching and those back at studio watching this, I want to clarify what all this means. As you know, the governor has issued a series of very strong advisories about the closure of major public events and public facilities. Last night, he went farther, and he essentially said people should not be with each other in social settings, in any number. And that followed, of course, the president's advice from the last 36 hours that took the 50 or lower number, which we were living with, to 10 or lower. So we have all of that. And then yesterday, a number of Bay Area counties issued an enforceable order, an enforceable order, which said that people must shelter in place. That's what they called it, shelter in place. And what it means is that people need to stay inside. However, the Bay Area articulated a number of common sense exceptions, both on the personal side and on the business side. On the personal side, they said you can in fact do what you have to do to engage in the necessities of life. You can go to the grocery store. You can get gas. You can go to the pharmacy. You can go to an essential medical appointment. And of course, they encourage people to go take a walk outside, or walk your dog, or go for a run, so long as you're staying separate from other people by at least six feet under the social distancing guidance that we are all now very familiar with. So that was an order. Today, the County of Sacramento issued a directive that is essentially the same as the Bay Area order with a couple of differences. The county directive does not have quite as much detail, and they call it something different. It is a stay-home order as opposed to a shelter-in-place order, but it essentially means the same thing. And though the exceptions in the county directive are not as detailed as the Bay Area order, it's two pages instead of seven, it reads essentially the same. There are significant exceptions for the stay-home directive for personal needs, essential daily life, but also for businesses, for essential functions. And of course, healthcare and first responders are at the top of that list. Everyone else is encouraged to stay at home, to telecommute, to do work from home as it is possible. They also are very clear, just as the state was yesterday, that essential sites do not include gyms, and gyms, bingo halls, and card rooms, and of course, building upon bars, wineries, in-dining, at restaurants. The county wants no gatherings in any formal setting. The city fully, fully, fully agrees with and adopts these guidelines by definition, excuse me, this directive. So I want to explain lastly, that although this is not a formal legal order, it is a directive, which is stronger than advice, which is stronger than a recommendation. And in my opinion, a directive is an order. It is an order just by another word. So take it as an order, and we will all be safer and healthier as a result. So we have a county directive now, which is as good as an order. It allows us to continue to do much of our daily life. There is no reason to panic. Let's all remain together as Sacramentoans, and we will get through this faster. Just wanted to start with that before we start our regular agenda here. The first is the interim ordinance relating to tolling land use entitlements. Mr. City Manager, or one of your representatives?
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers. The current outbreak of the coronavirus, COVID-19, has the ability to disrupt development projects through the cost increases, labor shortages, and other factors. The proposed emergency ordinance would help to protect proposed, I'm sorry, the proposed emergency ordinance would help to protect against the potential loss of money, time, and effort by those investing in the city. Staff is recommending an emergency ordinance that would extend all planning approvals active as of March 17, 2020, for one additional year. There are a couple minor edits to the proposed emergency ordinance that I would like to read into the record. On page two of the ordinance, section two, close to the end of the first sentence, delete the words "period of time" so that it reads "does not include the period that this ordinance is in effect." The second edit is on page two, section three, second to last sentence, delete the word "a" before the words "one year," so that the sentence is corrected, will read, "It is anticipated that the economic conditions that are impacting land development will improve within one year." Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from members of the city council? Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank staff, Howard, you and your leadership, and my colleagues on the council, and the mayor. This is something I think is very necessary. It's something that happened during the Great Recession by way of the governor's directive. And I think this helps to take some of the risk out of the system. Right now, there are a lot of unknowns and impacts because of these unknowns, and I think this helps maybe to give a little bit of comfort to part of the community that we rely on to produce housing and other things, and as well as a big economic driver, jobs, and that kind of thing in our region. And so, again, I just want to thank the mayor and the council. And Howard, thank you for getting this on the agenda so quickly. Thank you. I'll move, yeah, and I'll move, close the public hearing and move the item.
Second from Jeff.
Jeff, are there, since we don't have you up on the board, I want to ask if any of the members who are participating remotely have a comment or a question?
Yes, this is Jeff. I have a comment. So I'd like to thank Ellen Warren for bringing this to the floor. It is actually a very important issue, and I think that this will be very helpful moving forward with the business community and make sure that we can move forward with housing and other important projects that otherwise might have incurred costs that could have stopped the projects altogether. So Ellen, thank you.
Okay, very good. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Mr. Mayor, do you need to take a roll call vote?
Oh, we do need to take a roll call, given the fact that we've got remote attendance here. So let's call the roll on the item, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Shenier. Councilmember Guerra.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's take number two here. This is the temporary moratorium on evicting tenants.
And Mr. Mayor, you do have a redlined ordinance in front of you. And in addition to those amendments, on page two, section C, the second sentence says, should say, "in accordance with section two." It currently says "with subsection D." So again, section two, C, second sentence should read "in accordance with section two."
Okay. Thank you very much. Who's presenting on this item? Mr. Jasso.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. The ordinance before you is part of the city's efforts to address the financial impacts of the COVID-19 disease locally on the population, most at risk of swift housing displacement, namely renters. The ordinance before you works to balance the needs for relief by renters facing reduced hours or job loss, illness, and/or other time demands for childcare and family member care that result in a loss of income with the lease obligation for payment in a reasonable period of time. It establishes a temporary moratorium to prohibit landlords from evicting all tenants who are unable to pay the full amount of rent due to lost income caused by the effects of COVID-19. The moratorium would last during the governor's executive order, which currently goes through May 31, 2020. Under the proposed ordinance, the tenant must tell the landlord before rent is due of their ability to pay their rent in full and provide documentation linking the reason to COVID-19. Once the governor's protections are lifted on May 31, 2020, the tenant must pay the rent due to the landlord in full with no late fees permitted within 120 days. Accounting for the needs of all parties involved in a lease agreement and their corresponding financial obligations, we believe the proposed ordinance provides a reasonable response to the emergency at hand and keeps the renters housed during the emergency period and the landlord whole post-emergency period. The ordinance, proposed ordinance, does comport with the executive order undertaken yesterday by the governor, executive order N28-20. Thank you.
All right. I know we've got some comments and questions. Appreciate the good work and what it took to put this together in very short order. City manager's office, city attorney's office, thank you very, very much. Councilman Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo first those thanks for the quick turnaround from our emergency declaration last Friday to being here today with the emergency ordinance. Suzanne and your staff were working late Friday and over the weekend. Michael, you and your team were also working very hard. I am very glad to see the expanded ordinance now covers all units. And the governor's executive order, which you just referenced, is extremely helpful for us in protecting tenants during this tenuous time. But I also think I would like you, Mr. Jasso, City Manager, Ms. Alcala-Wood, to look at what we can do for small businesses that are commercial tenants. That was in the governor's order, and he gave cities authority to do that. There, much like a tenant in a residential property, many of these businesses are in a very precarious state, and the compounding nature of lost revenue and lost opportunity will cause many of them to fall out of their ability to pay their own landlord's rent. And I know that there's a lot of moving parts with the state and federal government to look at help for them. Our own program launches tomorrow afternoon to provide small businesses with emergency help. But I do believe that this is an important step at calming people. Many of the small businesses, retail tenants, restaurants, they are panicking because they're most often very thinly operated, very small margins. And so, just much like a daycare as well, we have many daycares that have landlords that they have to pay. And so, we don't want these small businesses to all be shut down during this period of time. So I will make a motion to approve this item enthusiastically, but I'd like to include the direction that we come back as soon as possible with some relief for those commercial tenants that are small businesses. And I'm happy to work with you all in the meantime on that. If you need further direction from the council, or, you know, we need more action from the state to give us that authority, legislation has been introduced at the state level to assist with that. And given the council actions so far to protect those types of tenants as well, hopefully we'll be supporting that legislation as a city.
Very good. I'll say my comment on that. I completely agree with you, by the way. Councilman Geta.
Thank you. I agree with the point of coming back with something specific for commercial tenants. It may not fit in this particular ordinance. And one, I want to thank city staff again for sitting down with all the stakeholders yesterday to try to clarify some of these points here, particularly adding section four, which is something that San Jose had in their ordinance as well. And then about giving up to 120 days, some latitude and help for both tenants and for the property owners. This is for staff, more of a direct direction. I want to clarify that when we develop the FAQ, it'll clearly show how this applies, makes it easy for people to understand how the protections are afforded to a renter, a tenant, and also how the property owner can respond to those concerns. And particularly those if they've, if they were, before this, if they were involved in some kind of criminal activity or whatnot, that this doesn't change that type of activity. But it focuses on the people who are in need, those who are affected by the crisis. Can you clarify that, Mr. Jasso?
So yes, we can, and we will have that clarification in the FAQs, which are largely drafted now, but before we promulgate them, we'll give a fine eye to ensure that it is crystal clear to both renters and landlords alike with respect to the provisions you've stated.
Good, thank you. And because I think that's important, is this is intended to help those who are being affected by the current situation now. With that, you know, again, I also like to see what are other things that we can provide or help with those. One thing that has been a concern is we don't want to lose housing stock also because of mortgages foreclosing, particularly for those who own maybe one unit and they're renting out that unit. We don't want a home sitting on the sidelines because of our situation right now. So we want to make sure we're have all the housing stock at its full capacity and keep people housed at this time. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Shenier.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to add my voice to the need to do something around small business here. Mayor and I were on the phone with 16 restaurant owners a couple days ago, and we know that they're going to be suffering quite a bit because they're closed down for the most part. So I'd like to see that. I know we have to worry about a definition of small business, but we have lots of examples, I think, now to go from on that, and would definitely want to bring this back as soon as we can. We have a choice, right? We can do this, or we can wait and have them come to us as part of the million-dollar loan. I think this actually lets us use that money for something else if we disallow the evictions at this point and have them work it out with their landlords.
Very good. Who is up now? Is it?
Councilmember Harris has a comment.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Jasso, I have a question for you. Are you still there?
I am, councilmember.
Okay, very good. In section one, F, there's nothing in this ordinance ways of ending obligations, payback rent, so once this ordinance is no longer effective, which is great, but what about people who are in arrears before this ordinance goes into effect? I mean, we're not wiping that clean, right? I mean, the issues that they had before they may have been affected by the COVID virus are still in play with their landlords. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, it's not spelled out in the ordinance, but nothing in this ordinance would absolve them of their previous debt, correct?
That is correct.
All right, I just wanted to make that clarification. Also, I'd like to say that, of course, our commercial tenants are also extremely vulnerable, and I agree 100% with Councilmember Hanson's comments, and look forward to coming back with a solution for this situation.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask a question in reference to the four months for repayment. And while it seems like it's generous, it also seems that those who are behind because of the coronavirus and are catching back up, four months to pay past rent and also current may be more than they can handle. So could we in fact look at a range of time that would include four months, but also give them a little bit more time if necessary?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, and correct me if I'm wrong, nothing in this ordinance precludes a property owner and a tenant from agreeing to longer periods. Is that, is that correct?
I would assume that is correct, yes.
Between, in their contractual agreement. And I think the 120 came about because at first there were some cities that were doing 90 days, some people, some that were doing six months, and then San Jose seemed to have got a, had this and been working on it, and 120 seemed to be something that provided a good balance. Is that, is that correct, Mr. Jasso?
I believe it was, we did determine it was a reasonable compromise, given the, kind of, everyone, different constituents, kind of stakeholders' needs in the transaction. So yes, we felt 120 days was reasonable.
This is protection for the tenant if the landlord and the tenant want to agree on something different. Of course, they can, but this is, four months is the protection for the tenant.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
Mayor, could I just add one thing to that?
Yeah, Councilman Carr's.
Oh, sorry. Let Councilmember Carr go.
Go ahead. Councilmember Carr.
Yes, Michael, a couple questions for you. You still there?
Yeah, I am, councilmember. Apologies.
So if I buy a house and lease it, I take out a mortgage and have to make a mortgage payment every month, and the tenant stops paying rent because of the virus, and let's assume that this state of emergency is going to extend beyond May, by the way, which I think most people think it will. We, do, does the property owner have any protection against being foreclosed on? And is that our function, or is that coming in at some other level of government?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Carr, this is Suzanne Wood, city attorney, and this ordinance does not address that. That doesn't mean that the council couldn't continue, couldn't direct us to look at that, but this particular ordinance does not address that scenario.
Although we should look at, I believe the state has issued some directive urging banks and mortgage committees to not foreclose in any way upon their mortgagees. If we can look at that and get a report back, that would be helpful.
Mayor just done.
That just takes it up another level. Then the bank has certain cash requirements that they must have on hand. Is the federal government intervening at that level?
I don't know yet. I don't think so. But we got a report back on that. Today's, today's action does not go that far, just as it doesn't protect commercial tenants at this point, but these are for successive weeks.
Yeah, we're pulling the string at one spot, and it has impacts across the board. And the different levels of government are involved in different aspects of this. But I think going ahead with this, we need to also make sure that landlords are protected against foreclosures, and that the banks could actually absorb the loss that they're going to get because they won't be receiving the mortgage payments.
Yep. Our work is just beginning.
I know. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hanson, did you have another comment?
Yeah, Mayor, I was just going to say, if we see that this emergency goes on longer than what we've contemplated in this particular ordinance, I think we would come back and revisit an extension to this, and that would change that period of time. But also, I do, I am watching what's going on in Washington, DC. They're talking of up to a trillion dollars of stimulus, some directly to people. The state's doing its part, and I know the mayor is working on that. So we are only one piece of that larger puzzle, and I think as we learn more, we'll have to continue to make informed decisions. This is a very important thing that we do now, and obviously can't fix everything, but is super critical.
It's a, it's a start, and the most urgent start. I just wanted to add on the, want some clarity on the governor's order of yesterday. Has he authorized local governments to provide similar protection to commercial tenants or not?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So we can come back then, as Councilmember Hanson has requested, to address this issue because it's hanging out there and we need to address it. The second thing I want to say is that at some point, we need to at least consider the idea of rental assistance here in some way. And again, whether that's through some of the federal stimulus that will come our way, or as part of the state relief package, or as part of a larger philanthropic effort to aid working people, this is something that we have to look at here, too, to fill the gaps. Okay? But this is very good start, very important start. It sends the right signal, and we all urge an aye vote. So is there a motion?
I made a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's call the roll, please, Ms. Cuddy.
Councilmember Ashby. We'll come back to Councilmember Ashby. Warren. Hanson. Shenier. Guerra. Mayor Steinberg.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Ashby.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that is unanimous. Very good. Let us move now to the last discretion item for the afternoon, and that relates to the utility delinquency penalties and water shut-offs, which we talked about last time. The city manager could do this unilaterally, but he and I felt that it was important that we get the entire council on record about where we stand on protecting our ratepayers here. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, I'm Bill Busey, the director of the Department of Utilities. In response to the, our challenging economic times and consistent with the governor's executive order, we are requesting approval of a resolution with two recommendations. First, continuation of the current suspension of water termination for non-payment, and the second is the suspension of the collection of late fees for all of our utility customers.
Councilman Hanson has a question. Go ahead.
Thank you, Bill. I know you're not over solid waste, but maybe Hector or someone could answer the question. When we were talking about this last week, I described utilities, not just water, in my request, and since we got this material later today. Hector, can you, can you help understand why solid waste isn't part of this?
Solid waste. Mayor Hanson, I mean, Mayor Hanson, Councilmember Hanson. Hector Barone, Assistant City Manager. We could put solid waste as part of this. As an FYI, we don't discontinue solid waste services when someone does not pay. It's a service that we continue to provide.
Because of the public health mandate of trash pickup?
Right, just a practice that we've had. We could add it to this.
Well, I just think for the, for the same, same reasons, we should include solid waste here. Well, I just think for the same reasons, we should include solid waste here, just so that all of our departments are uniform. SMD has announced they're following a similar practice, as have PG&E and other utilities, AT&amp;T, Comcast. So I just want to make sure we're uniform. So I would, Councilmember Shanir, if you want to make the motion, or I can, but I'd just like us to include solid waste in this.
So it's comprehensive.
So it's comprehensive, and how you implement it, since you're not stopping trash pickup, thank you, will have to be internal with billing, but I want to make sure that late fees and other things aren't impacted either.
Absolutely. We'd add that.
Okay, the amendment's accepted as a friendly amendment. Seconded.
Just a clarification, the discontinuation of late fees already includes solid waste, so that would be in addition to the, well, actually.
The report does not indicate solid waste is included, only water.
Okay.
So.
Well, on the fees?
The whole, when I read it, and granted, we've just got this.
Because it should be all utility customers.
Says waive penalties on delinquent utility charges, but the headline is water shut offs, and then when you read the resolution.
Councilmember, you're correct. I think that one of the bullets talks about all utilities, and then the second one talks about just water shut offs. I think it'd probably be appropriate to add that we will not discontinue service to any of our utilities for nonpayment.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's call the roll on the measure, please.
Councilmember Ashby. Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Shanir. Councilmember Guerra. Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Very good, everyone. Thank you. So, the remainder of the agenda is just the opportunity to provide some updates. You know, most of what we are doing has been pretty public here, but I thought there might be an opportunity to just go around the horn here and talk a little bit about some of our early efforts. We are the, the city is sort of acting as the conveners in chief here around a whole host of issues, both from a city management side, but also from an elected side, and from communities and schools where we're working, starting this past weekend with all of the districts, to help the districts figure out how we can continue to educate our children during this crisis, and how we deal with the ten and under limitation now, and use our various public broadcasting venues, as well as social media, to be able to provide lessons to our young people. This is an ongoing effort. I want to, you know, Councilmember Guerra himself has been very engaged in those efforts. Want to say thank you on childcare as well, and Councilmember Ashby, I know, is helping to take the lead here. Councilmember Hanson, taking the lead on issues relating to food distribution, which is a major, major issue. Councilman Warren helping on every front. Councilmember Shanir, looking at how we can set up a citywide fundraising infrastructure for our city is very, very important. Councilmember Carr, as well. Councilmember Harris on the homeless-related issues has been on the forefront here of trying to galvanize our response. And Councilmember Jennings, involved in the education, the childcare issues, and everything else. So as a city, and of course, Howard's team is not only involved, but leading in every one of these conversations. So it's ever-changing, but we are at the helm here, all of us, and are doing all we can for our community. And that's the way, that's the way that it should be. Howard, you want to add anything?
Well, we were going to see if Dr. Beulison could be here, but obviously, he was at press conference.
Yeah.
I want to ask Daniel Bowers, our Director of Emergency Management, just to give a quick two-minute update on kind of things that he's hearing for today and then for tomorrow morning's briefing.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, serving charter officers. Just to cover some quick updates in lieu of Dr. Beulison, overall Sacramento County to date, 40 confirmed cases, two fatalities. From the city of Sacramento's operational side, our overall objective continues to be throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, it's to ensure continuity of essential city services, and these are prioritized in order of importance as uninterrupted continuity of water and wastewater service to the community, continuity of answering and responding to 911 calls, and continuity of solid waste operations at 50% capacity or greater. So understand that we may have to, due to operational impacts, reduce that, but we want to ensure that the refuse gets picked up and removed. Currently, our activation posture is as follows. We have a crisis action team activated that's led by the city manager, and pretty much his executive team, making the strategic decisions. Our EOC, Emergency Operations Center, is activated at a partial level. We have our logistics sections and our finance section stood up. And then for the past month, as I briefed previously, we have our operational planning team activated to look at both the current operational picture and also the future operational picture. Pining into your questions about the overall update, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Very, very, very good. Any members want to chime in? It comes from Gueda. Did you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to start off with the work that we've been doing with the County Office of Education and SAC Unified to try to make sure that we have educational content available for those, for all those students who will be at home, and to provide resources for parents. Now, every school district is doing something different, but one of the things that we are trying to do is figure out, how do we make sure that we get educational content for those who may not have internet? So using the power of broadcast TV through a partnership with KVIE, from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., there will be educational content that is grade-specific and approved through the standards, that will be available on KVIE's cable channel and Channel 6.2 with an antenna. So if you have the antenna, it's on Channel 6.2. We have reached out to the County Office of Ed, and who has pulled the different districts together, and to see if they can put together educational material. We will let the educators focus on that point. What the city, as a member of the Cable Commission, can do is use the resources of Access Sacramento, which has two channels, Channel 17 and 18, that can do live broadcasting. We do have a mobile live backpack that can hook up to a location and an HD truck to also go out and do live recording and provide resources. We also have, through Channel 15 and 16, the cable educational channel, the ability to send out additional prerecorded education, and if we also needed to, this council chamber could also broadcast out information. We've worked with our cable and telecom partners, Comcast, Verizon, and AT&amp;T, who have, will be offering either reduced or free internet and mobile hotspots for the next two months for those folks, families who need access to internet or to work with their teachers for resources. They, as Councilmember Hanson has said in the previous item, they're also working on fees and fee structures. There's a lot more that we're going to continue to work with on our Cable Commission. I do want to thank our Access Sacramento, KVIE, and folks like ABC 10, and also the other, the mayor convened the general managers of all the broadcast stations, 40, KCRA, to talk about how do we use the power of broadcasting in this critical time to not only get education, but critical information in a uniform fashion. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for putting that together on that front. For moving forward to the younger age of the spectrum, one, I want to remind folks, those that are, we held a meeting yesterday with our Sacramento Childcare Coalition, which was Child Action, the Childcare Law Center, folks from First Five, First Steps, that's part of the St. John's program, and other local private childcare providers, to talk about what is available for and what are the needs of our childcare centers. Because if those close down within the current restrictions of what's allowed through the governor's order and the county's order, then our employees, who are essential workers who need to be at work, will not have a resource for them. One, I want to remind folks that we have, through the city's small business loan, $1 million available through the portal that will be eligible tomorrow. So for those childcare centers that are listening, they can apply for that, that up to $25,000 zero-interest loan from the city. Second, information that we received from Doris Matt Souie's office, the U.S. Small Business Administration will also be doing loans and support for nonprofit organizations. So both the private and nonprofit childcare centers can apply for that, and we've sent that information out. The, what, a couple of things I'd like to ask the city staff here. One, is if the city staff could reach out to childcare providers through our business contracts to see what their needs on sanitation equipment. Some of the comments that came from our call yesterday is, the hoarding and the buying that's been happening has made it difficult for them to access sanitation equipment. So I want to make sure that as we, we've done that for hotels or other businesses, that we, if there are any providers, that if we can help them with sanitation equipment. The second, the next piece I'd like to ask city staff to look at through YIPSI, is to coordinate with the regional office, our childcare regional office from the Department of, California Department of Social Services. The state, through its new regs, has reduced the regulations and licensing for employer-provided childcare. So this gives us an opportunity, and they're willing to provide technical assistance, to provide employer childcare for our critical employees. As the city manager's mentioned, we need to make sure that our public safety officers and folks who are managing our water treatment plant are there and available. People who are managing our sewer system or other critical services are available to work. So if we can find a way to have a, either a city-employed, city-sponsored childcare or ways to help others who want to assist in that, the regional childcare office can, with the reduced standards, can do that. The important thing to know is that we have many city employees, if they wanted to, and also many substitute teachers who may want to, who fall within the appropriate age of working. I've already have completed background checks. That means they are quickly and able to create pop-up childcare centers for our immediate essential personnel for essential services. And lastly, I do want to thank the YMCA because they, while they've closed their, their, not recreation, but their gym programs, they have converted their open space and their space using the guidance from the state level to provide affordable-priced and reduced-priced childcare at their facilities. So everything we can for those essential personnel to be able to continue to work, where that's just one step forward. I know Councilmember Ashby's working on another piece, but, Mr. Mayor, those are, I think, on the youth front, what is the city doing and convening? That's a big chunk that we're moving forward. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank, first of all, those of us in our community that are volunteering during this very difficult time. One of our groups stepped up to help distribute supplies to the homeless community, and I think we still need to develop fully, more and more fully develop our strategy to get out the supplies. I know we talked about hand sanitizer and other items to the homeless community, and I believe it's the Central Labor Council, I believe, that's going to be helping to distribute. And I'm sure there are other organizations out in the community that will help. I also wanted to suggest that we communicate with our PBIDs, our professional business districts, because a lot of them have information, or should have information, that they can get out to businesses in these communities that are going to be significantly impacted. I know I've filtered a lot of calls from businesses about the small business loan. I want to make sure that Mr. Jasso, Howard, has all of the tools he needs to really field the applications and the phone calls that he's going to be receiving for small business assistance. I'm glad to hear that the Small Business Association has also stepped up, Councilman Guerra, to make assistance available to small businesses. I think this is going to be one of our more very, very critical issues, because small business employs a lot of people here in our city, and those people are very concerned about what's going to happen over these next coming weeks and months. And so we want to make sure that we give some support and some certainty to the availability of resources, so they can survive through this very challenging time. So, again, I want to thank our city staff for moving very quickly to implement the $1 million. In my opinion, I think we're going to have to revisit that very soon, but also to make sure that our assistant city manager, Mr. Jasso, has the resources necessary, so we don't have a bottleneck, and people can't really get the information they need when they start calling and emailing. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to run through a couple of things here. Some hyper-local to my district and some citywide. First, I just want to say how proud I am of our city and everyone working so hard to come together and do the best we can for each other. This is sort of one of those moments where the more responsible we all are, the better off we all are. So we're in each other's hands, and I'm quite proud of the people of Sacramento, who are really working hard to take care of each other and reach out, and we will get through this together, as the mayor continues to say. And every day that we move forward, we are one day closer to the finish line. We're better off today than we were yesterday, and we'll be even better off tomorrow. We just need to keep pacing our way through it. In Natomas, the communication is going quite well. I'm very proud of the Natomas Unified School District. They have seamlessly closed down schools and are providing lunches at every site. They've also worked with the Scholastic Book Fair folks on a large donation, Ann Barnes and Noble, for a large donation of new books that they are handing out to kids at rotating sites. They've also worked with Dr. Pan and other medical providers in the area to also provide toothbrushes and little healthcare packs to the kids at each site. They are doing a great job, and I'm really proud of them. And we've been in constant communication, and I think their leadership, and particularly their superintendent, Chris Evans, deserves a lot of credit for his strong leadership. Twin Rivers Unified is also doing a good job. I have a small piece of their area in my district, as well as Robla. They have been participating and in contact, and also providing meals for their students. My office has been in contact with every senior community. We have some very large senior communities, which means that almost everyone in that community, some of them as large as 900 homes, are now needing to stay indoors, based on the governor's directive, unless they have essential things they need to go do. So we've been in contact with them. They're doing a great job of taking care of each other and asking for things that they need. But I would like to just take this moment to remind people that if you know of folks that are over 65, and particularly if they're much over 65, or have healthcare issues, to just check on them, give them a call, send them an email, some kind of little note, and check on them, just see how they're doing. Because we're, you know, we're all here together, and we can help each other out. I also want to thank the Natomas Buzz in Natomas, which is a great site that's been providing up to the moment information to people in Natomas on what they can expect and what's happening around them. That communication has been fantastic. Many people have asked how they can help or how they can volunteer. Obviously, if you have lots of funds, and this isn't a time that scares you economically, please contribute. Please contribute to the food bank, to your favorite entity. They all are going to need help. Everybody that works with kids, everybody that works with displaced employees, they're all going to need some help, and the food banks could really use you, too. And in terms of being physically present somewhere to help, we have been told that the food banks could use your help. If you're healthy, if you're not in one of the at-risk categories, then please do contact a local food bank. If you need help with that, you can call any of your council members, including me. I want to thank the hard workers of the grocery industry. You never know when something like this happens, who the heroes will be. But I know that those folks are working day and night to keep the shelves stocked and to help people feel some element of normalcy as they buy their groceries, and so those guys are really emerging as leaders, and I really want to thank them all. I'm extremely proud of them. I'm also extremely proud of the janitors and the first responders, who are also emerging as leaders at this time in our city, and of course, the healthcare providers, who are on the front line of this. And everything that we're doing as a city, county, state... And everything that we're doing as a city, county, state, as a region, really is just about, as you've all heard so many times, flattening that curve. Flattening the curve is really just an effort to give those healthcare providers a fighting shot at saving as many people as we can through this virus epidemic. And I know that we are doing that, and we are doing the best we can, thanks to great leadership. I want to thank the Sacramento Kings, who reached out to my office earlier this week and donated a huge chunk of food to the food bank and also through Sacramento County Office of Education to each school district site. I know that was well-received, and we're extremely grateful. I want to thank Karina Telamontes in my office, who wears two hats. She works here with us, but she also is a school board trustee for Sac County Office of Education. Mayor, that has proved to be very useful for us because she has filled in a gap on many occasions over the last week and a half to connect this city with the school districts across the county, whether that's for the Kings or just helping get information out to trustees. And I'm really grateful for her and her leadership, too. I am working on childcare. Mayor, I'm focused on essential workers, so healthcare providers, first responders, janitors, grocery, folks who have to go to work to keep the rest of us moving. Our hope here is to open up a few centers, just like Councilmember Garrett described as happening with the YMCA across the city, with a priority look at folks who must go to work. We'll have more information on that in the days to come. Somewhat bit more controversial, but I'm going to mention it anyway because we brought it up last time. We did talk about deploying hand washing stations to homeless camps around the city. That happened today. We put five stations in six locations. The locations were selected by the homeless union based on where folks congregate or already are. And so while we want to discourage congregating, we also want to encourage hand washing. And ultimately, as the mayor will tell you every time he is given a mic, our goal here is to get people indoors. We can't do it overnight, and here's something that we could do today, and so we did. And I hope that it helps a significant number of people. I also just want to remind folks that bars and pubs and, starting today, gyms are all closed. You can order food from a restaurant for pickup or delivery, but otherwise, bars and pubs and gyms should be closed now. Tomorrow, the city will launch on our city website our first million-dollar tranche of economic relief. Obviously, because the bars and restaurants and pubs and gyms are heavily impacted, we expect to see a lot of them applying for the funds. But tomorrow, you could go to the city webpage, if you're a business owner, and apply for a $25,000 for no-interest loan. You could apply for less, too, if that's what you need, then the money will go farther. But that will be online tomorrow, and I'm sure all the council members and the mayor will all be sharing it. We've had a lot of inquiries about that, particularly from some of the bar and pub owners throughout the city. I'm, I just would lastly like to say that, you know, these are unprecedented times, and we're all doing the best that we can. I'm extremely encouraged by my council colleagues. Every one of them is putting forth a ton of effort to try to serve every corner of the city. I think the mayor has been a stalwart leader that we can all rely on, and I'm proud to be a part of the team.
Thank you so much, Angelique, really, for all those kind words and appropriate words, up for the, for the community especially. It's great. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, I want to reiterate the food bank part. You know, a lot of the volunteers at our food banks are seniors and are not being able to come, so, yes, so we, we need volunteers there as well. I just want to note that the California Endowment has just put out a $5 million grant fund. And so, Mr. Jasso, I think it'd be worth contacting them and see if we can leverage some of the dollars that we have as well. So the mayor mentioned this. We're, we're working on trying to put together a fundraising plan for the city. We, we know, and, and this has been said, the $1 million that we've put forward so far for small business loans is going to go pretty quickly. And really, we'll, while we may be able to leverage it, just we'll not get to anywhere near the, the challenge that we have with our small business community here in Sacramento. Across the board, we're going to have challenges that we've never seen before, and, and I know that we're all working together on this. A number of us went to a meeting on Saturday. Saturday, and where we had representatives of Congresswoman Matsui. State legislators were in the room, city, county, school district, superintendents, county Board of Education, we're all there. I've been doing this about 17 years now, and I've never seen folks come together like that and with six feet apart. Come together six feet apart, we'll just make that a normal. And really led by Dr. Pan and the mayor putting that together. I, I think it just shows that, one, the depth of the crisis that we're in, but also who Sacramento is, and that we're always willing to step up and, and come together when we need to. So what we are going to do is put together a fundraising campaign. I've been working with Sierra Health Foundation and Sacramento Community Regional Foundation. We hope to have a website up within 24 to 48 hours where people can do donations. People will be able to choose between donating to a number of causes, including homelessness, nonprofit organizations, small business loans, individuals and their families, which could be safe places for kids, it could be COBRA payments for displaced workers, it could be tenant rights and, and those who are, who need help so that they don't get evicted or don't have problems with their landlords, or just give generally to a fund to be used for a number of, of these things and possibly others. I want to thank Sierra Health and the Community Regional Foundation. We will have one website. The Regional Foundation already has something up that is working for nonprofits, but they've, they've agreed to link these together so that it won't be confusing. I'm asking all of my colleagues on the council, we all have mailing lists as soon as we get the information. If you could send that out as well, we'll be doing that and using a lot of mailing, everything that we can get our hands on. We'll be doing PSAs and with a goal of, at a minimum, matching what the city is putting in, but I think we can do a lot better than that. So we'll have reports on that fairly soon. There'll be its own website, so everything will be transparent in expenditures as well.
It's a very exciting effort. I think this community has the capacity to raise a lot of money, to provide real relief in combination with all the public resources to a lot of people, a lot of small businesses, a lot of arts organizations, a lot of, a lot of worthy and needy constituents here. So this is very important. Thank you, Jay. Councilman Hanson.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I want to echo a few of the things that my colleagues said. I want to thank our city staff. They have moved heaven and earth to make sure that we're at the forefront of what's going on and that we're not reacting, but we're trying to stay a couple of steps ahead of everything going on. And so Howard, you and your whole team, on down through the police department, the fire department, the parks department, utilities, community development, probably forgot somebody, have just done a phenomenal job. We are showing how nimble the city can be because of that leadership and being responsive to the council. I really want to thank Susanna and her whole staff at the city attorney's office, who've worked tirelessly to churn around these directives from the council so that we can move fast. We had a unique special closed session last Thursday, an emergency meeting on Friday. We are here today, and so the, the work product of that is very clear. And Susanna, your whole team deserves a lot of credit. Mindy, the same with you, the city clerk staff, ever-present, you know, making sure that we're getting notices out, adapting to this new reality. You really deserve a lot of praise. And, you know, this is a different situation than we've ever been in. This is a different kind of natural disaster than we've been in, and so I think it's really a testament to your professionalism and leadership that we're able to face it so strongly. And Mayor, you've done a phenomenal job as the face of the city. We're all doing these different parts to, to help make sure we're moving forward privately, publicly, coordinating with partners, but you've been a tremendous face.
Thank you.
And I, I've heard that from people of all political stripes who, who don't always give you praise, so that's how I know they probably mean it.
I don't know about the face part, but that's okay.
I, I want to touch on a couple of things quickly. That rapid response is giving a lot of people comfort, but we can only do so much as the city of Sacramento by ourselves. And a lot of people, because we are the state capital, assume that the city is Hercules and, or Atlas, and that we're going to carry the world on our back. But it's through the county partners or state partners or federal partners, our private sector partners, churches, nonprofits, endowments, that we're going to get through this. I want to give a special thank you to Congresswoman Matsui and her team. The, the federal government approved an emergency declaration just recently, yesterday, in fact, that allows the Small Business Administration to issue up to $2 million in emergency funding for small businesses. For, for-profit businesses, the interest rate is 3.75%, I believe. For nonprofits, it's 2.75%, and that can be paid back over 30 years. That credit facility is very important. And so as we work on launching the program tomorrow for our own small businesses with our, our city capital, I think it's going to be important that we continue to share information about that Small Business Administration program. But that is a huge, huge help to these businesses that I'm hearing from, not just in my district but elsewhere, who are trying to figure out whether they're going to live or die because of how dire this crisis is for them, their employees that depend on them, their landlords that depend on them, all of the risks that they've taken to be part of our city. We, we want to make sure we're there. And so I appreciate the work that Mike Jasso, you and your whole team have done in economic development to deploy this new program. But clearly, we're going to have to leverage all these other resources, including the private philanthropic ones that we heard about earlier. My team has been working on food access, which has been touched on. I'm very excited, and I want to thank Tiffany Fink, who runs Paratransit. She's the general manager, CEO there, for stepping up to talk about how we help senior and disabled folks who are not leaving their homes right now but are the primary customers of Paratransit. Having served on that board for three years, that is a very mission-driven agency, and we're going to be able to connect those folks with food and other essentials because Paratransit stepped up, so thank you, Tiffany. We're also working at Regional Transit on providing some support during this emergency to various other jurisdictions like the schools. We should have more on that as soon as later tonight, maybe tomorrow. But given the changing workload and the disaster declaration we have, I think it's an all-hands-on-deck from all the agencies that we work with, boards we serve on, not just to respond to the public health crisis, to make sure we do that well, but also helping to ensure that the economic crisis that are most vulnerable are facing will have an appropriate and meaningful response so people know that they haven't been forgotten. The final thing, two things I want to talk about. One is a follow-up to our parking holiday, and I spoke to the city manager earlier today. We, as, as the governor has closed dining rooms, we've seen a lot of our food businesses shift to delivery and to takeout, trying to maintain a semblance of the business and to provide that critical link, not just for those of us who may not be good chefs, but who are dependent on prepared meals. And so one of the things I talked to the city manager about earlier today was that enforcement be relaxed or ceased in those areas that are commercial, where restaurants are doing business, so that people won't get tickets if they're just stopping in to pick up and leave. But also, I, I asked him to explore designating meters outside of those restaurants as loading zones. We're going to have to do a little bit more work with Matt Ironman. His team has been phenomenal in the parking staff, trying to figure out how we respond to this, but really designating those drop-off and pickup sites so that people don't hesitate to go in and come out quickly, they don't congregate. And I appreciate your help on that, Mr. City Manager. The last thing, and Mayor, you mentioned this, the arts organizations. A society that can't meet together doesn't function very well. Thankfully, social media is providing an outlet, the internet and its various tools, but almost all of our nonprofit arts organizations rely, and the for-profit ones, on people congregating. This has been, just like for bars and restaurants, a dagger in the heart of many of our arts organizations. And so as we work through this on our, our loan program, the SBA loan program, I believe we're going to have to come back and figure out what we do to protect all of the unique and special things about our community. If only the strongest arts organizations that have insurance, large reserves, survive, then we're going to be much worse off as a city because those tiny ones that provide unique aspects of our history and culture, if we lose them, we're really going to, we're going to suffer for a long time. And so I don't know exactly at this moment what the right answer is, but as we work through the coming weeks, that's going to be something on my mind for us.
Me, too. Thank you very much. Thank you, Steve. Jeff Harris, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Well, after Steve's speech, he thanked almost everybody that could be thanked, and I appreciate that. Indeed, our staff is tremendous, and actually, our council has a lot of very seasoned ideas about how to deal with this crisis, so I won't reiterate. But I would say that many of the initiatives that we're endeavoring to undertake rely on a steady supply chain. And my message is actually to the populace of Sacramento, which is to stop hoarding. Please understand that having five months' worth of toilet paper is not going to keep you free of the COVID virus. If we all work together as a community and carry on day by day and look out for each other, we'll all fare a lot better. The way to stop this virus is to stop the transmission chain, and that means we're going to have to do lives differently for a little bit. Maybe, maybe as much as a year, but still, even though that prospect is daunting, what we want to do is not infect each other. And I know that there is still some disbelief that a virus could be so infectious and cause so much damage, but the, the proof is worldwide already. And I think we're taking very prudent steps. I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, that you so wholeheartedly endorsed the, the county directive, the stay-at-home directive, and that's exactly what's called for here. We just simply have to buck up and do different ways of engaging with each other and support each other in business and in our community so that we stop the spread of this virus until we start to develop immunity to it, because that's the nature of viruses. They mutate quickly, and right now, we don't have much defense to this one. So I would just ask the people of Sacramento to please quit panic buying. Our supply chain will get there, will catch up, but, you know, we can't take care of our seniors, we can't take care of our businesses if people panic and buy too much, more than they need. There's enough for everybody. I just ask that everyone lay back. And again, I'd like to say I'm proud of our council and our community at large because this is a giving place, and I'm certain that we'll move through this with, with dignity and grace and taking care of each other. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jennings, your car, did you have any comment? Okay.
No, Mayor, my, my thoughts are already in the room, so I don't need to repeat them.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make a couple concluding comments here. The thank yous are well-deserved for everyone on this dais and for the people hired by our city, but it's more than just being hired, it's in their hearts, that are working all the extra hours to help serve our residents during this extraordinary time. But let's acknowledge that the work is just beginning because we are only at the very front end of this and its impact. And I just want to hit on a couple of issues that were touched on lightly and one that hasn't been touched on in this discussion today. First, on the arts issue, I agree with Councilmember Hanson, we cannot forget the arts. It's so easy, as it is during recessions and, and times where we have to cut budgets to forsake the arts. But we are on the cusp of a creative economy renaissance here that will benefit not only the soul of our community, but our economy as well. And I want to make sure that we have a strategy going forward, and, and we're, we're taking this in appropriate priority order here. The businesses that are closing, the workers that may be laid off, the, the food distribution issues, those come first, the education of our kids. But I'm, we're going to get quickly to the arts issue because that is vital. On the homeless issue, there is a unique opportunity, and call it a silver lining, it's hard to, it's hard to think of anything as a silver lining in the midst of this. But Governor Newsom and his team have identified 900 hotels But Governor Newsom and his team have identified 900 hotels and motels throughout California, including a number in Sacramento, that are either vacant or under leased. And he is working with them, and he wants us to work with our local hotels and motels as well, to lease as many beds as we can, and to more urgently bring in our unsheltered homeless population. This is a good and great opportunity, and I just want to make sure, in the midst of all of this, Mr. City Manager, that we have an individual, and my office, of course, will take a significant lead on this, that is on point, working daily on whatever it is going to take to lease up as many of those rooms as possible, and with the work of our non, cooperation of our county and our nonprofit community, that we figure out how we're going to navigate people indoors. This is a unique opportunity in the midst of this crisis to address a social condition and a problem that frankly was dominating the news, dominating the political discourse before the coronavirus hit. So, let's not lose an opportunity here to take appropriate advantage of this crisis to aggressively bring people indoors. That's what's on my mind. Anything else to come before the council? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.[1775.41][1775.41]